We have a motion. Do you have a second?
I'll take it.
Second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, then it's approved. Let me first, we have a new member, Daniel Finger, from the town of Scarsdale. Welcome to this august body. Maybe you want to tell us a little bit about your background?
I'm an attorney. My office is here in White Plains, just around the corner. I practice with my parents and my brother. I've been practicing for about twenty years. And with this practice for about seventeen. And I live, as I said, I live in the town of Scarsdale. I've been there for the past thirteen years, twelve years, and I grew up there as well.
And you're a member of...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm also a member of the Board of Architectural Review in Scarsdale.
I think that would be helpful.
Sorry.
A useful item. Okay, welcome again. And I would like to, for the board, thank Andrea, whose term has expired. And she participated aggressively in some of our developments in a very positive way, I think. And so I would like to thank her for her service. Commissioner.
So right now, we are totally focused on census. You're going to get an update because it's been almost a year since, actually, we came before you with anything about the census. But even though Census Day itself is twenty-nine days away, literally, the mailing goes out from the census next week. So you may be getting your census materials next weekend. Okay, so Thursday the twelfth, the materials start getting mailed out. So, you know, there's so much that we're doing, but we're entirely focused at this point and probably for the next sixty days on census. Everything's census. So Ted is the appropriate time in the agenda. Ted will give you an update on just going through all the different efforts that we've got going on. And that's probably about it at this point.
Okay. We have the referrals from the period January sixteenth through February twentieth. Does anyone have any comments? I need to refuse myself for the Dobbs Ferry and Higgs Guild submissions. Dobbs Ferry.
Both very good projects.
Oh, he says...
Delete that. Did you have a question?
No, I only had the question because I've been involved in the Woodland thing, but I'm not paid.
So I'd use...
I have multiple comments on it if you'd like those.
Go ahead.
Well, some of the things, this plan has been long in the making, and there's substantial community resistance to it, to limiting the height. Because what this does is it walls off another part of the river to the community. And we are very anxious to make sure that the height limitations are there and that they do conform to the low and moderate income requirements, which are very, very low for this particular point. And I don't see any mention in here, and I'm sorry, folks who don't like parking, but that they have agreed to include a parking spot with one for each unit. Because parking is a major problem in that area because of the number of apartment houses that are already there. And this transit corridor is a transit corridor which includes Metro North, which does not provide transportation for shopping, to hospitals, to doctors' offices, or to downtown. And it is a substantial walk, which you know that people who can afford the outrageous prices that these apartments are going to rent for will not be hesitant to buy a car. So that's some of the, but, yes, coordinate with the B-line. But the B-line goes nowhere reasonably close for what people are used to walking. If it was in Manhattan, it might be different. So that's about it.
How many parking spots? Do we know how many parking spots there are?
The last we heard from them was that they are going to have a parking space included in the rent. That was at the last hearing of the city council. But I do not see it in here.
This was a scoping document, so we only have the information that it gave, which was limited. So what you see in the description is basically everything they told us. So we would expect to see any I.S. for this in a few months, and that would have, I would hope, all of this information. So we only comment on what we receive.
Now, I think at the bottom of most of your letters now, you put that, you know, we hope to see, you know, the site plan or E.I.S. or whatever, so...
Right. Well, I mean, except in this type of letter, because we're responding to a scoping document, that presumes that the E.I.S. comments. I mean, there were still some comments on scope, so we would be on the mailing list for the E.I.S.
Good job. I mean, just to sort of follow up with what was just said. I mean, I think what would really be helpful here is to start requesting transportation demand management plans from every development to reduce single occupancy vehicle use and vehicle miles traveled. You know, I mean, I happen to think that whatever we could be doing to reduce the urge to bring a car, you know, especially unbundling, which we've just talked about in the past, is important. So that's for Ludlow rezoning. I also have comments on two other sites, some of them.
Sure.
For the, I don't, I think, I know the Irvington twenty dash O two rezoning is not our local formation that's fine. Just want to call the attention, call our attention to the fact that there are, there's a B-line bus route that runs along there. The bus stops are, there are no bus stops. You're sort of standing on a, a little buffer on the slant. Okay, and when it snows, you're in the traffic lane. There's no shelter whatsoever. So there is a concept plan called the Route Nine Active Transportation Concept Plan, which was done for the entire Route Nine corridor from Hastings to City Hollow. We should be referring every municipality to that, ask them to endorse it, because otherwise it's not safe to walk, bike, or take the bus in that area. Going over to the Yonkers United Parcel Service site, that's, I don't know if anybody's ever ridden a bike on Tuckahoe Road.
I wouldn't recommend it.
Exactly. So what this means is that this is, this site is inaccessible to anybody who's trying to travel by bike, which, when you think about the people who are working DPS, these are low-income workers making anywhere between twelve and eighty-three dollars an hour. This is, the site actually is relatively flat and easy to get to, or should be easy to get to, from the Bronx or Parkway Trail, one mile to the east, and the South County Trail, one mile to the west. And if there's, when we do our 2033 work, we should think about creating some kind of, like, off-street path on these enormous setbacks. And when, you know, projects come to us, we should say, yes, this is fine, but give us some of your setback. So instead of building sidewalks, let's create a multi-use path that's like ten feet wide that runs the length of the road.
With a nice divider between where you walk and where you bike.
Yeah.
Getting run over by a bicycle is not fun.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Oh, one other thing about the Ludlow Park Railroad development, to the east of the railroad track is a flood zone by the river.
To the east? To the west?
To the west, closer to the river.
Sorry, closer to the river.
West of the...
Is a flood zone, so...
East, it probably goes uphill.
Right.
Okay, if there are no other comments, can I have a motion to approve the referrals from January sixteenth through February twentieth?
I'll move.
Second? Second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's approved. Okay, we're going to skip number A. We're going to go to...
Actually pulling it from the deck up.
Yeah. Pulling it, I'm ready. We're going to go to the B.
Eight.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to go to disposition of residual parcels of Beach Street, White Plains.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So what's it, what word is...
I was number eight.
Right, I'm just going to pull that to the next one.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Good morning. You've got a resolution in your packet regarding disposition of several parcels in the City of White Plains. This was before your board in November of 2018, where you had a resolution where you recommended designating several of these parcels as residual parcels. So this is kind of like the second part, and we're kind of, the resolution recommends disposition of another parcel on top of those parcels. So, location, City of White Plains, two eighty-seven comes through the City of White Plains from east to west here. There's a split where you can go on what's called the Central Westchester Parkway up towards Route twenty-two in North Castle. It's a very short parkway. And right in the area where it gets split, there's some, I'll have you, I'll show you here, there's some sound barriers along the exit ramp from two eighty-seven to that parkway. The parcels that we're talking about are just on the other side of the sound barrier. Right now, it's a wooded area. And so here's a nice little description of what parcels we're talking about. In November of 2018, we were discussing several parcels that make up this basically a paper street here. So the pink strip here is part of the paper street. This is the other part of the paper street. It doesn't exist as a street, it's just on legal documents. All of these parcels here were purchased many moons ago, about a hundred years ago, for the parkway. And these parcels have never been used as parkway or associated with the parkway or used as parklands. In 2018, again, these were considered, these were, your board recommended that these parcels be considered as residual. Since then, the county's director of real estate has further negotiated with the, an adjacent property owners interested in developing these parcels here. And now before you is also requesting that, recommending that the city, that the county recommend that this parcel, residual parcel I, also be recommended for disposition. Also, since then, we had had some discussions about whether or not, whether or not some of these parcels, when they were possibly to be developed, whether or not these can be developed as maybe apart affordable housing on those parcels. Again, that's owned by the developer who's interested in purchasing these properties here. These are owned by the city. And it was, the real estate, director of real estate, we asked them that they inquire about that, and during negotiations, the director of real estate determined that it was in the best interest of the county to just dispose of that parcel and not have a request that they set aside any affordable units in that development. And again, this was, these residual parcels, right now, it's wooded, it's steep, this property is landlocked, there's really no use of this property. Again, it's never been used, and it's probably, it can never be used for anything like parkland. It would likely, if this property were to be developed, what the real estate director was saying, that the developer is interested in this property just for drainage purposes and also possibly just as room for access onto this potential paper street to get up to Beach Street. Again, you've got a resolution supporting the disposition of this parcel, these parcels here, and this residual parcel I.
So your board did previously consider this, but it's not clear, and I think we've looked at both sites later, but it's not clear in the resolution that we actually talked about both sites.
Right.
All right, so that's why we just, we need your board to...
Bring it back again, okay.
Kind of make it clear that we are, in fact, talking about both sites.
And also, since November of 2018, these properties were also offered to the City of White Plains, that they were interested in purchasing the property, as with any of our dispositions, and they did not express interest in purchasing the properties. And that's also in the resolution.
But they still own that little...
They still own these pieces, and again, these pieces are also not contiguous. So this developer has a challenge, has further challenge of getting ownership of the city property as well as his private property, getting approvals and access, getting utilities to these properties, things like that.
What's the zoning?
Zoning is, this property, the southern property, is multifamily. Again, it'd be very difficult to develop any multifamily in that, on that property. This is one and two, one and two-family zoning. Basically here, all this property here, including the developer's properties, is one and two-family zoning. And it's my understanding that City of White Plains doesn't require affordable set-aside in the one and two-family districts, only in the multifamily districts.
Looks like you could probably build five houses.
Yeah, five houses, two-family zoning.
Two-family zoning.
Maybe get ten, maybe get ten units in there.
And could we put a condition that one of them has to be affordable?
Or do we want the rental units to be affordable, if you make a two-family housing?
I can, I can take one better.
Rather than making the ownership affordable. And then it's...
Can we do that as a condition of the sale of the county property?
We can't. You can make a recommendation that the county real estate director consider that.
Right.
Okay. You had previously asked that, as they move forward with the negotiation, that they include a discussion of affordable housing. We don't, we were not in part of the negotiation, but your request was in fact relayed to them, to the real estate director. And so, like I said, it's, we don't know necessarily, we haven't been told that the outcome includes any affordable housing.
Why do they need additional parcels?
They're saying for drainage purposes.
But these are all, these are all, there's homes up over here already. These are all multifamily homes already.
Right, they're up the hill here. There's homes up on top of the hill here. It slopes down.
I mean, it's a very, it's a very odd piece of property. It's way in the back of nowhere.
Behind a sound barrier.
And imagine if, imagine if they need that street there, sorry for the...
Right, I understand why that's the street.
And so if that street bottoms out, if he wants access to this property, you know, maybe a...
Make a turnaround.
Call it a turnaround at the bottom of the street, that kind of thing.
Go back to the area.
Hold on, there's also a connection of a P.O.T., state, state P.O.T. stormwater facility, you know, infrastructure there. So they can take the runoff from their property, hold it, and have a point of discharge into an existing stormwater. Without that parcel, they can't, they won't be able to meet their stormwater, they won't be able to design it. So there's a connection to an existing infrastructure there on that piece of land, so that's why it's critical.
I would imagine that the owners of those properties, the houses, are not going to be real thrilled when all those trees come down, that are blocking the...
It's a sound barrier. You're going to be built right on the sound barrier, which we have on the north end over there.
Right, so again, that row of properties, the developer has control of this, think about here.
Yeah, but he can't do anything with it unless he gets the county win. So I think the county has some leverage here. They're going to do ten units, you know, rental or...
Very unfortunate to do anything, you know, looking at the site there. You've got a nice buffer, you've got a sound barrier, you've got a wooded area, and now you take all that away. But I guess the private developers got the land and supplies. It's just, it's sort of too bad.
And we could say we don't think it's a good idea to do that and not sell the property. We recommend that the county don't sell the property so that all that development is not going to take place. I'm sure the neighbors in White Plains would appreciate that, but that may be more than...
How many feet is that though? Like, I keep reading about, like, within five hundred feet of highways, but air quality is just awful.
I mean, we're talking, I mean, it's literally going to be, it's to be ten feet off the barrier.
Right.
Well, the road will be fifty feet off the barrier.
Right, so, barrier's right there.
The house will be facing...
Do you have the square footage of these units or...
I think these lots are about fifty...
About a hundred.
There are about a hundred.
The county's property.
Square footage is, well, the total square footage, this is point two-five acres, and this is, sorry, point five acres. So this is a total of point seven-five acres.
I would say at least we should recommend that the, that there be affordable housing as a condition of the sale of the county property, which is, which the owner of the property can't really do anything without the county property.
So what's the money involved? What's the cost to the property?
It was appraised at, I think it was under twenty thousand, selling for twenty thousand?
For the Beach Street.
Actually, for this parcel here, I'm not sure if it was all the parcels together, but it's twenty thousand dollars. Yes. Again, our parcel as appraised is landlocked, there's no access, hard up against a...
Our parcel is useless, except, except to the developer to build ten units of housing.
And ruining the lives of the people.
For creation of much-needed housing stock.
Yeah, I have to say, I mean, down over here, this part over here, it's not owner-occupied. These are all apartment or...
Right, that's the multifamily district as well.
Multifamily homes, it's landlord absentee over there. Over here, I believe, it's more one family and two-family.
Right, this is, this is the multifamily district, I believe, right, Jim, it starts the year, so this is multifamily district, this is the one and two-family district.
Right.
Yeah, it would seem that we could recommend that some noise and air quality testing be conducted before they, you know, what would happen if they do take down all those trees in terms of noise and air quality? Because I think it provides probably significant noise reduction and probably a lot of air quality, too.
Does secret have to be done for the county to dispose of property?
But only on the county's action.
Right.
And the county's action is the disposition of the property, it's not the construction of...
Right, they're going to need to go through secret.
Well, the city...
The city when they consider the...
Right, the subdivision or site plan.
Development of, right.
Right, right.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just, I couldn't vote for it. I mean, just looking at the benefit and, you know, overall goals, I just, somehow to facilitate a development in that particular site here, it's not something I would favor.
Okay, remember, the board has already voted to approve it. We just need to be clear that it's both parcels, so...
The first, the first approval was associated with the first strain on the paper street.
Right.
We could change that.
Understood, understood, you know? And drainage, the wooded area is perfectly good for drainage and, you know, retaining water.
That's probably what it serves, the function it serves now.
Right, but it's, it's not a flood zone. I mean, it comes down, yeah, it's not a flood zone over there.
No, it's, that's where it starts getting elevated over there.
It goes down, yeah.
But if they wanted to increase their ability to...
Yeah, to pick up more moisture.
To pick up moisture, trees are better.
Yeah.
Couldn't we include both things that have been suggested, that there be a study and also a recommendation for affordable housing?
We could. That doesn't mean that, you know, the real estate in the county is going to approve that, but I think, hopefully, it would take our communication...
Well, and remember, you have to still go to the board of legislators, and so...
And still go, still yet to go to the parks board as well, so...
Has the city given any indication where they stand on this, other than the fact that they owe our property?
We haven't been in contact with the city on this one.
Okay, would someone like to...
Well, at a minimum, if you're going to include a provision for the recommendations, then we need to change the language of the...
Right. Well, let's see what the motion is first. Someone like to make a motion?
With the affordable housing, if we put the extra unit in the bottom, which is family.
So if we include, if we recommend that one of the ten, probable ten units be included as affordable?
Affordable housing.
And that the...
And that's, and, you know, we're just making assumptions about ten units. That's just our own calculation that...
Well, just one of the...
One of the units developed.
Right, I mean, it could be a three, it could be multiple, it could be a three-family at that point also in that area, if they change the zoning.
Well, how about ten percent?
If you get ten, you get one, you get one.
Minimum of, with a minimum of...
With a minimum of one. That's what I'm saying, use the ten percent, because then you get your one.
Ten percent with a minimum, with a minimum of one, in cases.
And that the legislature consider the air quality and noise impact on the neighbors' floor.
And on the residents who are going to move there.
Not to mention the residents.
Well, they're at least know what they're getting into. The people who are there are going to be pretty unhappy when those trees get cut down.
Yeah.
It's a mature neighborhood, it's focused, they've been there for many years already.
Okay, so we have a motion that was presented to us. We're adding a condition that ten percent of the units built on the site with a minimum of one be affordable, and that an analysis be done of the air quality impact...
And noise.
And noise impact of development of the site.
On, on the existing residents and future residents.
That the county assess?
So the legislature consider that and ask for assessment.
No, the county has not, doesn't do it as part of this process, right? The county doesn't do that at all.
Let the legislature consider how to get that impact done.
Well, the city, I guess the city would have to, which, if they do secret, they'd have to do it anyway. Okay, any other comments? So we have a motion on the floor with those two additional conditions. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Two opposed. You have a count again of the ayes? Seven to two.
We're supposed to say aye right now.
I figured it out.
Or the...
Okay, can we get an update as, as this progresses through the various levels of county government and then to the city?
Parks board, board of legislators.
As to how our recommendations are being considered? Okay, thank you. Okay, next is we have the tree removal permit. I don't remember doing tree removal before this year.
On county property, yeah.
Good morning, everybody. Okay, this is for tree removal permit for the, associated with the Mayfair Senior Housing over at the Community College. This has been before you, go to the next one.
I could do this, please. That was the wrong button.
Button?
Oh, well.
Maybe I'll stop pointing. Okay, so this is the Community College. This is Noelwood Road. This is the old, this is the new Mayfair Senior Affordable Housing Development. This project was before you, and they requested a tree removal of forty-eight trees. Essentially, it was left somewhat to grow into its natural state, got very overgrown, so they, they were before you to get a tree permit for forty-eight trees with a mitigation plan. They're before you now to ask for additional eight trees. I want to go turn it off again.
So we voted on the forty-eight already?
You voted, you approved it. We had a mitigation plan, it's a significant landscape plan, which we'll see a portion of now. There's going to be a stormwater retention facility in this location to handle, the original development was old-school, collect and dump into a big, very technical word of, hey, hole in the ground, a retention base, okay? This is now new regulations, they had to get approval through the town of Greenberg, so now they're following all the current standards. So in order to accommodate additional, they're putting a parking area for the residents in this location, which used to be green, so we have to cut down eight more trees. The trees that triggered our permit, and you can, you're allowed to cut down up to twelve trees, less than six inches caliber without a permit, but if you cut down one tree twenty-four inch, it triggers, requiring that this board approve a tree removal permit. So we have a tulip, actually, three tulip trees that are in this area. Go to the next one, Michael. Okay, they are mitigating the removal of these eight trees with the installation of nine, I should have put my glasses on, sorry. Oh, they're in my hand. That's like my hand was second. Okay, we're planting nine sweet gum, twelve, twelve black, black tupelo, it's called a gum tree. And then we're also adding ten amelanchia, which is a native tree, and then nine flowering dogwoods, and then eighteen crab apples. So we're putting in twenty-one canopy trees and thirty-eight small ornamental trees.
Are these over and above what we saw before?
Yes.
What was the third one there? I didn't recognize the type of tree.
The third one was a crab apple.
Dogwood crab apple.
They had amelanchia, crab apple, and a flowering dogwood.
Like a tulip, you said.
And two, there was sweet gum and black tupelo.
Yeah, the one I didn't get was the other one. So I got the crab apple, flowering dogwoods.
Amelanchia, shad blow. It's an early blooming, white flower, you see it in the wood, it's an understory, one of the first trees to bloom. So this is why they have to cut these trees down. This is all the subsurface stormwater retention that, in the olden days, they would collect it and dump it into that retention basin. Now... it and dump it into that retention basin, now they're required to hold it on-site. So because of the grading operations, we're gonna have to cut down these trees. So, I can also update you on the, where, so they've been working on this project, so rehabilitating it, the construction is approximately twenty percent complete for the construction of the affordable housing for the seniors, they've completed the asbestos and the mold remediation, all new roofs and fascia trims are complete, including the administration building, the apartment interior demolition is complete, they're doing framing of some of the apartments, they're at thirty percent, rough electrical and plumbing is started, and the site drainage work is beginning, they completed one other, you see that retention basin to the, to the right there, from the corner, that's already being worked on, it should be completed this week. And window installation is also be completed in building A, and B and C are underway. So they're making progress in the construction of this project, and as they were, I guess, as they were further designing this, and they figured out they needed additional storage, so that's why they're before you. So before you was a resolution approving the tree removal.
This is your, your West Elm property, right?
Correct.
West Elm.
West Elm.
West Elm.
I worked there for eight years, and I sat there for ten years molding away, it's thin, but-
And the trees, and that's, a lot of the trees that were being removed were unsafe and deteriorated, so that was the first piece.
There was a lot of undergrowth that is now overgrowth, because it hadn't been touched.
Trees grow.
The trees, but I can't believe that that retention area, that subsurface, was part of their original budget, so how are they paying for that?
That's not our, you know, they didn't ask, I didn't ask them really, they're, we only provided them with the land, we're not providing any assistance financially for the project, so they got the property, they're, they're obtaining other funding.
So again, you mentioned it, it's county property, is this a lease arrangement with the developer?
Yeah, the Board of Legislators has approved it, it's already executed.
This looks like a good project, and you've got a good number of replacement trees, and you need to put the drainage in, and you need to finish the project, so I certainly think we should-
This is, it's a, the mitigation is much higher than, you know, I didn't even have to push, they really, they knew we wanted to do the right things.
But you also have to remember, if you go back to the aerial view-
Yeah, they, they cut down-
It's in the middle of the woods.
Right, right, it is in the middle of the woods.
So it's, lots of trees are out, and we need more projects like this. Can I have a motion to approve the tree removal permit?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Next, Census 2020, we're getting close.
All right, as Norma mentioned, the census is very much upon us, even though the reference date for the census is April first, everyone will receive an invitation to respond to the census in March, starting on March twelfth, and people will have the opportunity to go online and respond themselves in the month of March, so it's really, it's this month. So just a reminder on the areas of the county that we're really concerned about, the areas with our hard-to-count populations, referred to as hard-to-count areas, you can see that they are sort of all over the county, but at the same time, they really are concentrated in certain areas more than others. The city of Mount Vernon is the hardest-to-count community in Westchester, you can see that there are lots of block groups on this map where the response rates back in 2010 were below sixty percent, or even in some cases below fifty percent of the population responding to the census. There are all sorts of different ways to measure hard-to-count populations, hard-to-count areas, the Rockefeller Institute put together another measure that they called at-risk tracts, and for example, in the city of Yonkers, there actually is an area where, what's that word? Basically, this area right here, which is part of, my understanding is like the Nodine Hill area of Yonkers, is the hardest-to-count, most at-risk tract, not only in Westchester, but in all of New York State. So you can see that these are sort of distributed all over the county, moving up to Porchester, the Village of Elmsford, even the North White Plains neighborhood in the town of Northcastle, and moving up to North County, it's, you know, it's all over, it's in Mount Kisco, that area of Yorktown near the Jefferson Valley Mall, the center of Peekskill, Assam, so these are our hard-to-count communities where the bulk of our efforts are really focused. So as far as advertising, first of all, we put up these three hundred car card, which are these, these ads on the inside of buses, these are the ads you see when you get on a bus, on the inside, above the railings there, including seventy-five of those in Spanish. We also put sixty ads on bus shelters, including sixteen of those in Spanish, and we really tried to figure out the best locations for those using that hard-to-count data, and also looking at the census data on where people speak Spanish in the county. So really trying to utilize this, because this is really at very little cost to us to be able to hit a lot of ayes with this advertising. Again, utilizing our resources, we have these rotating ads up on the Jumbotron in front of the county center, and those are changing every week. And then we also put in some ad buys on twenty-four billboards in Yonkers, Mount Vernon, Yorichelle, Porchester, and Peekskill, and here's some more detail on exactly where all of these are, and you can see the campaign start date was February third, and those will be running through April twenty-sixth, and here are the specific locations of these billboards and some pictures of what they look like. These are in Yonkers, in Mount Vernon, and in Porchester, this is in Yorichelle, and one in Peekskill. We'll also be making available promotional items to try to promote the census. We will have twenty-five thousand each of each of these different materials, the reusable shopping bags, these are kind of like tote bags, these are really in high demand because there are no more plastic bags in grocery stores as of March first, so we expect these to fly off the shelf, and it's great because people carry them around and act as advertising for us. We'll also have twenty-five thousand each of bookmarks and stickers with that same logo.
Which are already, well, yeah, now, the bags we don't actually have yet, they should be arriving either later this week or next, early next week, with the bookmarks and the-
You have them in different locations throughout the county, or?
We're gonna give them out to the different municipalities with the idea that they get out at farmers' markets, and that they be, he was definitely, but the farmers' markets start at all different times.
Right.
Well, that's one of the things that we've learned. But the bookmarks, we've already given out to the Westchester Library System, they're already in the children's rooms, because children still read books, all right? And the senior citizens actually like them, too, so we're also getting them to the nutrition programs and the senior centers, because seniors still like to read books, so, yeah, they're definitely getting out the door.
Okay, and the legislators got something to discuss?
Yes.
We'll make sure.
Yes, no worries.
So the Westchester Community Foundation made funding available to the county for us to be able to hire a census coordinator, so Roberto Contreras began work in January, and he has been, you know, full steam ahead on trying to coordinate all the moving pieces that need to come together as far as outreach, as far as education, but in addition, the census-
And he works nights and weekends.
I should say, yes, I should state that as well, because he is a great resource for being able to tackle all these events on weekends.
Yes.
But in addition, the Census Bureau is still hiring, you know, this is a huge temporary hiring event for the US government to try to hire as many people as possible, and these are good-paying jobs, they're jobs that people can, can take, again, nights and weekends, great for students, great for seniors, so anyone can go on 2020census.gov/jobs.
They actually have a map online, I was looking at last Thursday, and the county's hired rate, by the way, as of, as of last Thursday, was only seventy-six percent, so they're having difficulty filling the jobs, and so they're paying twenty-three dollars an hour, they actually upped the amount they're paying in Westchester.
Wow, that's pretty-
Yeah, so, you know, two of our staff have now gotten hired to be able to assist with this, again, in addition to working their job here, they'll be able to do this night, so it's easy.
Anyone knows people who are interested-
Yeah, the Putnam rate was ninety-seven percent hired, but Westchester was only seventy-six percent hired, so.
Would you be able to send out just a real brief email to county employees, and I'll make sure that I promote it even more, just how to, how to do it, how much it is, and what it entails?
Sure, yeah.
And then a timeframe?
Yep.
And there are a lot of high school kids that would take these jobs.
You have to be at least eighteen.
There are a lot of high school kids that would take these jobs.
Yeah, but you have to be very responsible and very, um, good at eliciting responses.
Right, they're gonna vote, so I guess we helped them as well.
Well, but eighteen, but a sixteen-year-old, you know?
You have to be, yeah.
Go to Burger Chef, that's a-
The county has been involved in all this outreach and education, including municipal presentations, so Norma, Bill, Anthony, you know, been around, myself as well, have been around to, I actually think this number is maybe higher now, this is increasing every day.
They did another one last night, in Westchester.
There we go, so we're trying to reach literally every municipality, but we're also trying to reach all sorts of different groups, non-for-profits, senior centers, organizations that serve these hard-to-count populations, including, you know, small children, so everything with education libraries, really trying to get everybody on board. And this is Bill Brady addressing CSEA, did a great job getting out our union members here. So, we created a Census 2020 webpage, so we've always had census data on our website, obviously, but this is a separate webpage that was created to really hit home the ideas about 2020 census outreach, as opposed to the data we've always had on there. So this page has all sorts of information and links to the Census Bureau's webpage to try to consolidate everything, so people know where to go to see the actual questions in English and Spanish, to see information on their local complete count committees, so people can get involved at the local level, all our promotional videos that we put together that we will show in just a sec, and also our promotional materials, the posters that we put together. So the county put together five video PSAs targeting different populations-
Well, we've released five.
You're right, I'm sorry, we have released five PSAs at this point.
I'm Tim Foley, I'm the Executive Director of the Building and Realty Institute. So much federal and state funding is dictated by the results of the census, we think it's incredibly important that everybody be careful. Our organization is focused both on building affordable housing within Westchester, and on making sure those who are renters within Westchester County have the support that they need, not just in order to afford their homes, but also to afford healthcare, education, everything that's important for them is important for us. The single biggest thing that we know is that there's a large number of people, and an ever-increasing number of people who are coming to Westchester as an affordable option to commute into New York City and work there. We also know that there are huge gaps, and we need to know where those gaps are. There's so much that rides on our ability to get things done here in Westchester County, to deliver results for those who are renters, but also for those who are homeowners, it's just important that everybody respond and have a voice in this process. We know that the census is coming, we know how absolutely critical and important it is to get an accurate count, and so we want everybody to respond, especially those who are renters, or who are in apartment buildings, who are, who are in some type of transitory housing, those who think they may not count, I'm here to tell you, you absolutely do, and it's critically important that you respond. So I would say, whether you live in a house that you've been in for twelve years, or whether you're in temporary, transitory, or illegal housing, it is still important for you to answer the census. You live here, you count, you matter, and it matters to all of us if we have an accurate count.
Where does this play, where do they play?
On the county's YouTube channel, but you can get to it from the county's web, Census 2020 website on the Planning Department's website. Oh, is it playing on?
They're on, News Twelve has been playing them.
Yeah, Carl is actually the person who put them all together, so, yeah. And so the county's been releasing one a week, so just to keep the message fresh, and to get press coverage on all of the different videos that are coming out, there's at least two more of them coming, where the idea was for us to do one a week, so there's one, there's one on children, young adults, seniors, why it's important to the business community, the renters, one that you just saw, because by the way, all of our hard-to-count areas, with the exception of that bizarre area up in Yorktown, are all, well, no, they're all multi-family areas, and so it's important for us to get the message out to the property owners, the landlords, and to the people who are renting, you know, that it's important for them to respond.
So we've also been engaged with the New York State AG's office, and also our Consumer Protection Department, about census scams, because unfortunately, every ten years, people do try to target people, especially the elderly and other people who aren't familiar with what the census is, people do try to impersonate census takers, and try to, you know, commit identity theft, get people's information from them. So just raising awareness that the Census Bureau doesn't ask for any of your sensitive information, it doesn't ask for your bank account numbers, credit card numbers, social security numbers, you can see the list here, you can't, you know, you don't have to allow someone from the Census Bureau into your home, you can respond to the census on your doorstep, preferably you should respond yourself, but if someone is coming door-to-door, you can identify that that person is a legitimate census taker and not someone who's impersonating a census bureau.
Are you gonna show pictures of what the census taker ID looks like, so that people will-
No, they can't, because they don't want people to emulate the IDs.
Well, but they'll get it before anybody else.
They will, but they said they don't want pictures of it, of it released, so.
Okay, there never will be a phone call, correct?
Well, that's a good question, so the Census Bureau is inviting everyone to respond, essentially through the mail, and then you respond online, but when you respond, you actually do give them your phone number, but it's true that for most people, you won't receive a phone call from the Census Bureau, it's actually only for follow-up if there are questions about your answers, if they are confused about your responses, if you left some things blank, if some things don't make sense to them.
Or if multiple responses were received from one address.
Yeah, that's a great example, but yeah, so it's, it's a good distinction, because you do give them your phone number, but they-
Do you have to give them the phone number?
They, they would appreciate a phone number just for follow-up, but, but they will not be-
Do you have to?
We are encouraging everyone to fill out the census.
It's not, it's not mandatory, it's a mandatory question.
Yeah, but, you know, the Census Bureau will not be cold-calling anyone, right? So-
Because the Census Bureau doesn't have your name, or phone number, or email address, so the only way the census is going to outreach to you is you're going to get a letter that is addressed to the resident or household add, that's it. So it's only when you respond that they start collecting that information.
So we're going to be coordinating census hubs all over the county, so a hub, a census hub is basically an accessible location, open to the public, where people can go to fill out the census, and they can get assistance with that. So the plan is that all Westchester Library System, public libraries, will be census hubs, and that staff there will be trained on how to assist people with filling out the census, but we'd also like to get out to other senior centers, senior buildings, you know, other places where the public can access, and even one-time events, you know, like looking at things like farmers' markets, races, you know, religious events, cultural, ethnic events, things like that.
The Peekskill Area Health Center has scheduled a census party for Saturday, March twenty-eighth, which we thought that was a great idea. Yeah, exactly, it's a creative way to be able to invite people in, and you know, to present to their customers and their clients who already have some relationship with the staff there to be able to come and keep the census there.
Yeah, and healthcare partners are great for this, because healthcare is actually the motivator that the Census Bureau found in their research, that motivates people to respond to the census. Oh, it's more funding for healthcare in my community? Great, I'm gonna respond. So it's really about getting to people through people they already trust, and already have those relationships with. So, New York State created census outreach grants for 2020, and awarded funding to counties and large cities, and the funding formula actually considered the hard-to-count areas, and actually used the Rockefeller Institute methodology partially, so Westchester County was awarded five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, but seventy-five percent of that funding must go to not-for-profit organizations that are pre-qualified with the state, and also obviously must go to serve those hard-to-count areas and those hard-to-count populations. We should also add that Yonkers was separately awarded a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, so we are administering this funding for the rest of the county, because Yonkers is one of those big cities that, that got a separate allocation. So we held, at this point, three trainings here in- So we held, at this point, three trainings here in this conference room, and we're trying to schedule one more, to train as many people as possible to be able to go out and give these presentations to their communities, to senior centers, to all sorts of different audiences, to get as many people educated on the census as possible. So the presentation that we've put together for this really focuses on the basics, you know, how to respond, how to avoid any scams, why it's important. And again, seniors are a hard-to-count population of concern, especially this time around, because the Census Bureau is really encouraging people to respond online, so anyone who doesn't have as much familiarity or comfort responding online, you know, we're concerned about. I should add, everyone can still respond over the phone or over the mail, but really, the Census Bureau is pushing the online response as the first response, and most people actually won't receive the paper questionnaire until the fourth mailing, so you'll get a letter in the mail that will say, please go online and respond, most people will not receive that paper questionnaire initially.
Is there a way that could, you could have at the last minute filled out online, but you still get a paper questionnaire because it crossed?
Because you haven't, you didn't respond in time, yes, the paper, the fourth mailing though, the first batch of the fourth mailing doesn't start until April 8th, so if you have not responded by April 8th, then that mailing will go out with the form, otherwise, because of the code that's been assigned to each household, housing unit, they're gonna pull your, you out of that mailing distribution, so if you respond on the first one, you likely will get the second mailing, but you not, will not likely get the third, fourth, or fifth mailings.
So T-Mobile also donated 200 tablets and 100 hotspots to the county to assist with our effort, and these will be deployed at those census hubs, including one-time events, you know, these are really great for, you know, one-time, you know, outdoor events, you know, you can put them at a table at a farmer's market or something else, so these are really great for, you know, those times when you can't be inside a building with a computer with internet access, to again, allow people to respond with assistance at these events. And these will also be locked down to prevent any fraudulent use, so, you know, these tablets will only allow you to respond to the census, you won't be able to, you know, enter a fraudulent census website or, you know, even check your email or anything like that, the idea is, we want people to feel confident that this is actually safe. So beginning on March 20th, we'll be able to see in real time what the response rates are by tract, so this is new for 2020, obviously, because everyone is able to respond online now, so it's really cool, it's something that, you know, back in 2010, we obviously just couldn't do, so we'll be able to look at areas of the county that have low response rates and be able to target our resources and say, okay, we really need to target this area and be able to raise this response rate, so that'll begin on March 20th, and it'll be very interesting to see how that works.
But the Census Bureau has data, that's why we wanted to show you this specific slide here, so this, that's a census tract in Yonkers, they already have this available data online if you want their Rome, so they actually, if you, you can actually scroll down, you see there's a lot more fields, they know the percentage of the people that live in this census tract with internet access, and so, you know, the people who don't, that's all the areas where they know they're gonna have to send paper surveys sooner than that fourth mailing we just spoke about, but all those factors together, so you see the self-response rate in the last census in this particular census tract was only 25%, county-wide it was 73%, nationwide it was 76%, so a 25% response rate shows clearly this is an area we have to be concerned about, and so starting March 20th, we'll be able to see on the Census Bureau website exactly what the response rates are going to be by census tract.
Yeah, and this tract in Yonkers is that at-risk, most at-risk tract in New York State.
And that's the Nodine Hill area?
Yeah. So this is just an example of some of the posters that we put together, we have more on our webpage, but just a little look at the outreach materials.
Because we do have a lot of grandfamilies in this county, so we have to remind grandparents they have to count their young children, their young grandchildren.
Maybe going forward that we do more education in the schools, in elementary, because-
So we did meet with the school superintendents back in January, believe it or not, and encouraged the schools to adopt census in our schools week. Nationwide, the Census Bureau is encouraging, next week, it's next week is the census in our schools week, to be able to encourage the schools, they're gonna teach the kids about the census, they're going to, you know, have open houses, and they're gonna encourage the school districts-
I think from now to their future, I mean, and then the kids come home and they tell us to do census, I mean, I know my kids are telling me to do it.
How long does the census intake process go, when does it, when is it over?
So the Census Bureau will accept self-response through July, but people who have not responded in April and May will basically be put on the list where the enumerators will come around, the census takers will start to come around. Basically, we want everyone to respond right away, you know, in March, in April if possible, starting in May in areas that have a lot of college students, those are actually the early non-response follow-up, because they wanna get them before the semester is over, that's when the census takers go door-to-door at all the households that they haven't heard from, and that basically lasts through June and July.
We have a lot of programs between now and July that have huge numbers, particularly at the county center, we have Salute to Seniors, about 1,100 seniors come to it, so I know I've spoken with Norma about it, but you're certainly welcome to have a table there, and then all our outdoor events at this point, you know, they're very, that's who, a lot of the population is who you're talking about. Right now, the county center has, they're hosting the high school basketball, male and female, and Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, our cities represented, particularly Mount Vernon, are playing, and it'll be sold out, so again, if you're welcome, if you just let me know, to set up any kind of, you know, they'll be there a long time throughout, you know, they'll be there throughout the day, so.
Yeah, those are perfect opportunities, absolutely.
Does the homeless count that was done?
Yes.
Do you fill out census forms when you were out there?
So back in January, the county conducted its annual point-in-time homeless count of the street homeless, Bill, who's not here, who actually was a volunteer here in the city of White Plains for the county to work on, you know, identifying the street homeless, the police already know where they are, but when they went out that evening, they actually took a longitudinal and latitudinal, actually, location of all the street homeless that they found, and we actually provided all that data to the Census Bureau already, in addition, because you have to tell them where the people are.
Yeah.
So in addition, we've already-
You think they're gonna be in the same spot?
So you give them location, yeah, okay.
Right, as a point, as a matter of habit, they will still connect with the local police departments, but we've also given them the location of all the soup kitchens, the food pantries, the overnight shelters, so the Census Bureau was armed with a whole excel, and when they operate, you know, like the first Tuesday of every month, this one's for veterans, this one's for, you know, whatever populations they might specifically serve, so that they are armed with the information about how they might best count the street homeless.
You know, I'm sure this was already, probably already done, but in regard to the Latino community, there are local newspapers that go into the local stores to distribute, so that would be a very good source, you know, and also particularly with the changes with immigration, you know, there's concern about giving you information on who it's going to.
Sure. So the RRFP for the state funds is out right now, the responses are due back Friday eve, or Friday afternoon, for that 75% that has to go out to the nonprofits, so we wanna see how the local communities, including New Rochelle and Portchester, want to use those funds, in addition, then, the balance of that, the county will use to implement the rest of our communications plan, so again, it already included the buses, the shelters, the Jumbotron, the billboards, and so we've talked about doing some social media boosting, we've talked about doing some ethnic print ads as well, Wonka, did you wanna add something?
Yes, and one of the public service announcements that is yet to be released is entirely in Spanish as well, so we wanna include that in our social media and the YouTube channel and every other space.
Okay, thank you, Ted, any other things that members would like to bring up for the meeting?
I have something else, you probably heard in the news that there was a worker who was killed at a site in New Rochelle, and I know that, you know, as a planning board we just make recommendations, but is there something that could be added from the board about how important it is for, you know, development to have proper training?
It's more OSHA, right?
It's OSHA, yeah.
Well, the county must have some board office or something that deals with worker safety.
Consumer protection establishes licensing that then requires an insurance and job training, but I don't think it's more of a state requirement for job safety, can we scale the project?
Yeah, I think there's state and federal, you know, I think there are state and federal, like OSHA and...
Oversight.
Oversight, yeah.
The point is they're sort of far away, whereas the county, if the county had-
Well, they come down and do inspections.
They do, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we can review for our county projects, and that's makes a lot of consideration for you.
Yes, sir. Anything else? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, everybody.